One minute.
Well, about fifteen seconds.
Watching the call.
Yeah, start two seconds before.
No, no.
It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody have any public discussion? Then we will go to approval of the agenda minutes dated July thirty first, twenty twenty three and August first, twenty twenty three.
To approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Just one of those days.
Road Department, our N E R S, we'll go right to the Health Center monthly report.
Sure, a couple of things that we'd like to highlight today. Good morning.
Morning.
We're working on physician recruitment and most notably a surgeon to come in and partner up with Dr. Cendolian and then assistance. You know, over time as Dr. Cendolian transitions out of his practice here in Elgona. So at this point, he's telling us that's probably a couple years. And so as we look at surgeon recruitment, we have a recruitment firm who'll be coming into town this week Thursday. They'll be meeting with our staff and our physicians and as well as those at Hancock County Health System in Red. So as you may or may not be aware, Dr. Phil routinely provides services in Elgona and at Hancock County in Red. So we look for somebody here to partner up with him and eventually replace his practice with a surgeon. So we have a recruitment firm coming in this week. That would be good. Physician communication, we just recently received notification that Kusut Regional Health Center physicians have scored in the top ten percent nationally for physician communication. And that's based on patient perspective or patient satisfaction surveys. That's a really big deal. That's a big, big deal. So we're really proud of our physicians and we'll find a way to celebrate with them. Picture their stuff to recognize them. There were twenty one hospitals in Iowa ranked at that level. So when you think about the top ten percent nationally or with twenty one in Iowa, that would be a big milestone. That's a good thing. It's a great thing. I knew, um, Dr. Serdus, but the writer had mercy one north of Iowa, this city. So following much later was your retirement, he was suddenly becoming the chief operating officer. His name is Chad Moore, and I think he's just getting started with his own patient. So that's a name that you maybe will be seeing right here in the future. And our Senior Life Solutions program is now in operation. And that's seen patients already. And I know that's such an important thing. Anything else for anybody that's just over in North Carolina themselves. They're all in good condition, but just a little unstable. But I think, yeah, what is, what is. Do you have a boss?
Your statistics look pretty good, yeah?
The stats are good.
Yeah.
Yeah, they really are. We actually close the year strong. We're a little over ten percent operational income minus the non-cash I person adjustment. Those are un-audited, of course, but that's about good. So that's a good, um, but, um. I think I actually just recently read an article that there are seven rural hospitals right here in Iowa that are at risk of closure. And not to say that seven hospitals, well, close, but they're at risk. And risk is defined as having lost from operations for multiple years. So successive years in the little or no resources. And they tell more than that than half the assets. Positive physician, just a little bit of fortune.
Any more questions?
Mm-hmm.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
As well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Happy summer, kind of a day for me this week.
Summer's about over. Sleep there. Summer's gone.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Yes. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
What is the road department? We've got any new things going on?
No, why should I use the blade?
Got nice man.
Yeah, we got a pretty good ring. I made it very a lot of places, but good evening. In fact, you started, I guess, they saw we're too wet. They just moved together and moved to the territory.
Do you guys get two inches of more?
Yeah, two, they'll give you a little two and stuff, but I think part of the noise you got a little more now.
Didn't think closer Sway City was in the neighborhood of three.
And plus, there'd be several over full, you know, check out the Sway City.
Yeah.
Would you get way down south?
Just an inch. But it was nice.
Scott, did you, uh, have a chance to look at the Donnie Wagner's road there? Yeah.
What happened there was the mower had just went out and we bladed it.
Okay.
Bottom of the grass and the dirt. So so we replated it.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. All right, that's about it.
Blacktop patching looked good. Blacktop patching looked good.
One, the bridge didn't end up very good.
Didn't it?
But I'll talk about that with discussion too.
Are they coming back again?
Yes. Yes. The other, the other man has just turned out all right. They still have some work to do.
Anything else for the form? Stop. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Roger, you got a new hire.
Good morning. Yes, we do. It's all over us. I hope you have a copy of this one. I could be going with this agent.
Oh, that's broken.
Perfect. So this is, let me introduce you first. This is Wes Gibbs. He's our newest hire, Deputy Sheriff. Wes is from Bancroft. His wife's looking very exciting. And Wes is, was a North Union school teacher for eleven years.
Um, ten years.
Ten years.
At Tomca and.
And North Union. And he's won with our applications and ended up in our finals. And we've got him enrolled in the academy first week of January. So I'll let you take it over.
We will swear you in.
All right.
Repeat after me. I, Wes Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the Office of Deputy Sheriff in Kusut County of Kusut as now or hereafter is required by law.
I, Wes Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa that I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the Office of Deputy Sheriff in the County of Kusut as now or hereafter is required by law. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Most stress.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, not to model. Oh, we can't be paid thanks for all this. Yeah, I lost this land and this land.
It don't work just like that. Or
both copy, also one for Timmy, one for Duller and one for Megan.
What's your wife think of all this?
Oh, she loves it. That's her giving me that.
Yeah.
It's an army when it's men, so.
Yeah, she's used to it.
Well, at least this way, even when I'm working, it's all remotely close, so as opposed to being away from each other.
Yeah, I hear it times a bit much, but.
Now you have the full staff, Doc.
Yes, we're full staff and then we're hoping to get started with the, uh, courthouse security position. Once Derek gives me the okay that they're good to go upstairs, get all locks and stuff and all that. Kind of tentatively planning on October. But we won't put him out on his own until after the cabin retreat.
You're telling him he's gonna be in the courthouse upstairs all?
Well, no.
Yeah, what is that, yeah?
Uh, yeah, although we do have a trial starting today, so you'll see a couple of us over here today. One of our inmates has trial starts today, so.
It's just like watching fun.
Yeah.
Just like that.
You know, you gotta get along with Bailey, don't you?
Well, it's just like the army. You gotta meet the people that you have to. Stay down good thing. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. Thanks.
We are up to discussion decision on supplemental insurance options from Global Life Family Heritage.
Morning, guys. How are you?
Good morning.
You're ready? Guys, have any question for me then, or?
I don't.
No. You explained it pretty well last time.
Yeah. It's, uh, what are the next steps, I guess, then?
Well, I would entertain a motion to accept or deny.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
This is providing an option for employees, not replacing anything.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd make a motion to accept it and add it to the options that we give employees.
Second to that motion? I'll second. Discussion. We quiet down.
For me, when I come in, so I would, uh, when I typically do counties is I get the department head list of each, right? And it's usually a five-minute kind of like this, hey, this is who I am. This is what I do. Hang out the break room. If people are interested, great. If not, I follow up with them off the clock as well if they want. So they have them options, but like you said, yeah, it's not to replace anything. It's just another supplemental and also do a whole life program as well. And then a wellness program. Some people that are, uh, really like the wellness programs just for the fact that it puts more money in your guys' pocket. It saves the employer. And it's really the only way we're gonna make health insurance cheaper is by getting us to go for all the preventatives we don't wanna do. So.
If, if you mind, if you can go to the auditor's office and ask for Melissa.
Okay.
She does our payroll and Donna and Wilson does our H R. If you can give your information to Melissa and get, she can get, tell her that you just shared and approved this as an option and she can get the information that she needs from you. That information.
Perfect. Okay, then choose Melissa.
Yeah, at the end of the hall on the left hand.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We still got.
You, you wanna hear a bit of that?
What's that? Sorry.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a good day.
We are up to liquor license for Columbia Hall Association of Elgona, Iowa. Jack moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Carter. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried unanimous.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. You think you needed a chassis before you can get an ambulance?
Well, if we're back and we approved that, when we made the decision to continue with purchasing that ambulance rather than waiting to next fiscal year, because of the chassis and not being able to, um, to, to lock in the price if we waited. So this is just the, um, I don't like the wording on it because we're actually buying a chassis. As you can see on the invoice, there's actually a bid number on the invoice. So we're actually buying a chassis. We don't have the chassis because when they, when they sign the chassis to us, oh, over to us when the ambulance is built, that's when the warranty begins. So even though we're buying the chassis today, the warranty does not start until we have a completed ambulance. We're actually buying the chassis versus, says on the invoice, prepayment of chassis. So their prepayment and what we look at, prepayment, let's get two different things. We're prepaying them versus when the ambulance is delivered or we're actually paying for the chassis that's going to be sitting at the factory.
Supposed to pay for that. That could be an audit issue.
Mm-hmm.
And, um,
After we do the budget amendment transfer of that, um, are the money that was designated towards the vehicle?
Do we wanna call Elizabeth to double check on this? Cause I mean, the situation here is complex and from my conversations with her, I I know it's not the prepaying for things. Like you said, I know she has mentioned, but there's, there's been a lot of changes with COVID that she also talked about and knowing that we'll actually own the chassis, I don't know that that would be an issue. What I've heard, but.
Do you guys, they won't let you order it? And then pay as it comes in? Kind of like ordering motor graders and.
No, the idea of getting that price locked in was, we had those four options back when we proved this, I don't know where we had this on the agenda, but we had the four options on how to proceed with the chassis. I think we called her at that time, didn't we, Kyle?
Yeah.
Didn't she say with, with COVID, it was?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure I called her at that.
This is.
Technically, you're taking possession of it.
Technically, yes.
The dealer would have.
Not, uh, not the county.
Not the county, yeah. We would, we would.
Possession, but we're gonna hold it. It's just a big part there. So if that business would close or if that factory would close.
We still.
We still own the chassis. It's ours. We have a bid number. That's our chassis. We bought it. Just a late delivery to have the warranty begin, but we actually have a completed ambulance.
So upon approval of this, it's not necessarily a prepayment of chassis. It is a payment for a chassis. It's just being stored in another location. Was that?
Yeah.
Correct. And.
This isn't a normal way of doing things, but with COVID and the availability of having to get chassis.
Yeah.
This is how we made this work.
Yeah.
Are they ever gonna catch up? Probably not.
Not, to be honest. I mean.
Not there's. Lifetime anyways.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that are only going to be produced as ordered now. I think that's kinda just a change of what we went through.
Normally, we don't pay for anything till we take possession of it.
But I don't think we have another option.
I don't know that we ever did this before.
Well, what would be, what would be the auditing concerns?
We can't pay for anything.
So being, being in this, would be county property stored in another location, does that fit in there to be a different scenario or is that? The, the way I look at it is if we owned a truck as a county and then we had to have that truck worked on and it sits on another lot.
But we've already.
We still.
We've already taken title for that. So that would be a difference.
So we wouldn't get title for this truck, for this chassis?
Correct.
You wouldn't get title.
We would not get title to this until we, it would be delivered.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
There's my angst.
Hmm. So then we really wouldn't own it until it's to it. I mean, we have rights to it, but.
Don't raise the title to the latest for warranty purposes.
Fair.
We still own the chassis.
Would it be prudent to check with Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Try to. Just making sure that we do go about it the right way. I mean, I I can see where Phil's coming from here, you know, maybe it's a.
We can try to get ahold of her first morning, maybe later in the meeting, see if she calls us back.
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, I, I called and texted her, so hopefully she gets back soon.
That way we aren't back something on any time.
It knows.
We'll put a hold on that for a little bit.
Okay.
You have an agenda item here to hire a full-time E M T?
Yeah, we followed the hiring process and then we did make an offer, um, and she has accepted the offer. Uh, Caitlin Householder, she's a local owner of that area, a person. And I don't wish to see if she'll hear. Um, she was an E M T. She was in paramedic school, uh, there. So basically we all she will be a paramedic and she's local, so we can retain her for quite some time.
She's currently in paramedic school?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Where is she an E M T now?
She, well, used to work at the hospital. Um, she got her E M T. She's been working over in Palo Alto County with intention of coming back here where we opened up hiring again.
Sure, sure.
So. Very good. She had worked at Kusut Regional here, so.
Okay.
Does have ties there experience there, experiences as an E M T.
Full, full staff then?
Two more.
Two more.
Oh, I'd make a motion to approve hiring Caitlin Altholder.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Starting the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Here up to discussion regarding budget workshop recording.
Yes, I don't, I don't know if anyone in particular wants to start here. I remember when we were getting towards the end of our budget workshops this last season, um, it had been brought up. I think to a couple of us about recording the budget workshops and and they hadn't been in they hadn't been recorded like our regular meetings were and stuff. So we had talked about putting it back on the agenda. I remember.
I don't think it should be recorded because yes, it might, it might force us to go into closed session during every budget workshop.
It would.
Because we're talking about wages and benefits of individuals. And they have a right to go into closed session. We might have to call people in here during budget workshops and ask if they wanna go, if they want closed session or or put it out to the individuals, like, can you come in and ask for closed session?
That's only if they're.
We're talking about wages and benefits. That's what budget workshops are. And person for, and, and people, people, personnel, wages, benefits, that's what a lot, mostly.
Pointing one point five subsection I is to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual represent or request a closed session.
We also go into a closed session during negotiations and union negotiations.
Union negotiations is exempt from public.
Budget workshops are not regular meetings. It's ours. It's if somebody wants to come in, yeah, they come in to, to, I, I just, I don't see any reason we have to report those.
We did bring this up at our department head meeting this week. And I'm not gonna speak for all department heads, but there were some concerns about going into, um, recording the meetings due to me, for example, when I meet with the board during my budget and I'm able to be open for you to talk about and concerns I have in my office or, um, budgetary issues, um, and I think recording it might put a stigma, I might not feel free to say some of the things that I meant. Um, not that I'm hiding anything or it's just, you know, sometimes just being open and free and with the board, um, is easier when you're not being.
We are delicate matters to be able to discuss sometimes. I just don't, and I just don't see a reason that we should, we need to record the budget workshop.
Mick, you got no opinion?
I, I do agree with Tammy and Jack. I, and I know at our department head meeting the other day, there were other department head, uh, people in here and most of them shared that same feeling.
I, I'll make the motion that we do that, record budget workshops.
Do I get a second?
I'll say.
Carter. Discussion.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Not to record.
I mean, it's, it's already that way.
We really don't.
But if you want.
I, I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to just get him up again, because otherwise it go off the place, just get put on, we get through, we get through.
Any more discussion?
I guess my thoughts is I can see benefits of, you know, being recorded because it is county business, but I can also see where um, the department heads would have issues with, you know, openly discussing different things. And it makes it difficult to actually make the, you know, decision to actually do it or not.
I, I guess. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say maybe if a pub, if a public member, I did have two different individuals reach out to me and ask about this, you know, at the time, but, um, maybe if we were a little. Okay, two different individuals reached out to me and asked about this, you know, the time, but, um, maybe if we were a little. I know it's hard to say sometimes, but list on our posting, here are the departments we're gonna be, which I think do, do we do that? Okay, so.
I, we tried to.
So then, I mean, a public member could say, okay, approximately this time. And they can always reach out to us or to the auditor's office and. If they wanna sit in on any of those budget workshops, it is open to the public, yeah. And we did have someone come sit in. Yeah. Really this year on that, so. I mean, it's not a question that whether people can come in and sit in or not, um.
I guess, um, my perspective on it, I, I understand the concerns and. Potential hesitation that way, but it is an open meeting either way, um, since it is an agenda item. For those things, um. I, I struggle drawing a line between why we agree forward one and not the other.
Because one's a workshop, it's regular.
But even those conversations in the workshop that you're talking about that are potentially, um, more sensitive topics. We can have conversations with the department heads. Individually, any day of the week, I mean, I could talk to Tammy five days a week, that's not a good meeting. So I feel like if there is specific. I feel like if there is specific things that need to be addressed during that. Couple month period that we're doing budget workshops, I feel that's easy to accomplish in other ways as well. Uh, and considering the budget's primary responsibility of the board supervisors, I think. Public should have access to that. Because most people aren't gonna be able to take off their job to come in and watch a budget workshop.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Black.
Yes.
Nat.
Yes.
Wexler.
Pass.
Stacker.
No.
Jerks.
I'll ask.
Back to.
No.
Jerks.
Making it harder on me. I'll say yes. Motion carried through to. I do think there could be a slight bit of a compromise on this, that we record some of it. But when you talk about wages and personnel, I think it should be shut off.
I thought I was gonna ask. Way to separate those two, I mean, majority of what we talked about is. Other budget line items. That don't have any, have anything to do with personnel issues or, I mean, wages, yeah.
So in the end, I. I think we could really. Do a compromise and I, I'd like to keep it legal, you start talking about wages. Yeah, it shouldn't be on the camera presenting, nobody can say what they think.
It is legal, there's no law that says you have to record, you have to keep that, that's it.
But it is, we should be as transparent as we can too, so.
Yeah.
It's, so in a future date. If, if we have some, if we have an idea of how we want to go about doing that, so that it does close smoothly. Rather than open meeting, closed session, open meeting, closed session, then. We make amendment to that motion, then to. Include that parts of the meetings will be recorded, parts will not.
Let's do some thinking.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and, yeah. If that's the will, you know, the, the public and department heads too.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
We are up to landfill and transfer station, if you're ready to come up.
Do you get called in or?
Yeah. We won't waste your time. We'll call you.
Cause I, I, I can go back and look back from that meeting because we had this conversation, will we bring the purchase of that line or something?
I just, it, it's.
Is.
Difficult because that's. It's how they have to do business, because they can't work on the chassis. Until the chassis is.
Okay.
Bought and paid for, they, so they can't build that chassis out for our ambulance without us paying for it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, if we can't prepay, it's kind of.
We'll find something today.
Sounds good.
Yep. Sure, it's not very soft. So I'll turn like this and just start rolling away.
It's, it's if you get out of the old spot where you're sitting in.
Mm-hmm.
Then, then you get up where it's not.
The wheels. And they'll just kind of rest there, but you get out of that groove and you just start rolling away.
Yeah.
You're a goner.
Yep. If you sit down too quick, you end up in feet that way. Did you guys all make it out to the fair?
Yeah, I had a permanent, permanent rest in the bathroom for.
Oh.
Three days. It was a good spot.
I went every single day.
Did you?
You did? Every single day.
I made it on Saturday while I was in the bathroom prior.
There, Tuesday for the parade, and then. My son does the pedal pull.
Okay.
Got third place this year, so you know, we get to go to state again. That next week.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
State is, uh. That's Saturday, September. Oh, oh, okay, look, look, not state. No, I want state pedal pull.
Yeah.
So they have that at a different time in the state fair?
Yeah. Cause they think they get competitors down at the state fair that'll do, and then. Um, they take the top three finishers from each age class and, and. Then they go compete at the state pedal pull competition. Or is that, over in Mason City. The. Oh, yeah, we always have pedal pull at Laverne Days, and they qualify, they can qualify for state there too. Yeah, it's the second year in a row that he qualified for state.
Okay.
Last year he got first in his eighth group. No, he had to hit the Catholic stand a few times, the.
No.
Doesn't matter how hot it is, hot chicken and biscuits is always good. Both the.
Doug forgot something.
The, uh. Brown Sowls had their babies at the fair. I see a bunch of baby pigs there.
Cool.
Yeah.
I was through there, but I didn't look that close.
That's Kayla's favorite barn, she could stay with the doggy pride.
Morning.
Morning, Dust.
We're up to the landfill, Doug.
Yeah, um. I received the board as well, uh, received notification that. The current manager Dustin Hanson resigned, so I would recommend that the board would appoint. Uh, Blake Stevens as the new manager of the Cesspool County Transfer Stations. You bet.
I would make a motion to table this agenda item till next week, um. And the reason for that is the exit interview that was conducted last week, I believe the board should have. We should have a conversation about a few things that. Happened there and were said there, and I think we probably need a specific agenda item and possibly close session to do that. And have that conversation.
Need a second?
I'll say about.
Discussion?
Um, for that exit interview, I was the only one from the board physically present, Carter joined by phone, so I feel. The other three of you should be aware of information from that.
Prudent to do so, I think, regardless of, nothing against Blake or anybody, you know, just. Think it'd be nice to have a conversation to. Just in regards to the transfer station, I don't see any reason why we can't inform with, with the, uh, appointment. Has nothing to do with the appointment, that's, that's beside the point. Whatever app, whatever you, information's not gonna change the appointment, so I don't see any reason why they have to table this.
Any more discussion? Have a motion and a second on the floor. Do a roll call vote on the motion?
Black.
No.
Nat.
Yes.
Wexler.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Jerks.
No. Motion carried.
Next week, do you want to include session?
This item would be after another one, I'll talk to you on that afterwards.
So we do not have a manager of the transfer station now. I guess, uh, what are your feelings as far as making some of the day-to-day? Uh, decisions that need to be made up there, who would you like to do that? May I ask? What is, what is your, what is your plan for the transfer station? Is it to change? I mean, we've always had a manager there.
Close it.
Well, if you guys want to.
These guys, these guys don't want a manager up there, so let's just close it for a week.
We can tell them to just rep all two.
I mean, that's a sensible decision, this, this is the, the thing that people. In the county come to me all the time about is how inefficient this door is because we can't make a simple decision like. Appointing a manager, that has nothing to do with the appointment of the manager of the landfill, this, this exit interview. Means that's, that's, that's an employee that left, he was disgruntled or whatever, so he left. It wasn't, it doesn't change it back, we need a manager up there, so I say we close the landfill for a week. There's nobody up there to run it, so. Doug can't go up there and sit for a week.
What's, what's been the operation since our past managers been gone?
I worked Friday, all day up there, and Blake worked yesterday with a secondary road employee. Today, a secondary road employee is up there, and Blake is up there, and. If I have to, I will run up there again, which I think is Friday for sure. It might be Saturday, but again. Um, the Cesspool Waste Management Association, um. They. That, that is. Because transfer station and landfill are only by Cesspool County. The Cesspool Waste Management Association is a, is an association that runs. The. Runs the, the, it's a twenty-eight-year agreement, Cesspool County is part of it. I, I, you know, I don't know, I guess, um, but. I would reiterate, I don't know what an exit interview. Uh, unless something was brought up about Blake, I guess, that's what it is. But I can't see, and I've, I had the opportunity to work with Blake, I've. I know Blake, and I have all the confidence in the world that he can be a manager. So, and I, I'm. I, I talked with Blake about it, and my hope was that this would be taken care of today. But if you guys have other ideas, the sooner you would allow me to know about what is going on. With. The Cesspool County Transfer Station, the Cesspool County Landfill. But I also am looking at consultants for the Cesspool County Transfer Station and landfill, if you guys have. Other things that you want to do with that, you're more than welcome to do that, I will continue to do that if you would like, but. If, if you guys want to take over the operation of that, that's fine.
I'm gonna make a motion to close it for a week, because we don't have anybody to run it. Our board is, our board is inefficient, we can't even, we can't even appoint somebody to manage a department, so I'm gonna make a motion to close it for a week.
Motion's out of order, not on the agenda.
Has to do with the landfill. It has to do with an appointment, we don't have managers, so what else are we gonna do? It's, 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 it has to do with the appointment of a manager, we don't have anybody to run it, so.
If we, if we have to close it because we don't have a manager, it should have been closed since the day Dustin was gone. If you follow that same logic.
And you should do your job and appoint a manager, Kyle, what you're doing today is ludicrous, it's nothing to do. Like an employee left, okay, so we, big deal. They, they have the right to leave, that doesn't mean we have, we have to cease doing our job and running the county. And we can't run the county efficiently if we don't appoint people to their, to a position. Carter, you should, if we're done to go up there and sit up there for a whole day.
I'm sorry, Jack, I, Carter, you were on the phone.
Most was maybe, uh.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah.
We can't do it because it's not on the agenda, somebody will give us it.
I just want, didn't want to speak out over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was on the phone and I. There were no other board members present there, I think it's prudent that we all just have a conversation about the transfer station. And appointing of a manager is included of, in that, as far as how. How to proceed, I think it's just important for the board to hear those comments and as a whole, and to. See more of what's, you know, what's going on up there and how we can, how can we move forward with that.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this exit interview happened Thursday, if there was such a. Great need, I, I think this was on the agenda prior to, or I had submitted this, uh, request. Prior to the exit interview, um. If you felt there was such a need, why didn't you just go ahead and put it on the agenda for today?
Exactly. I, that was too late to get on the agenda by the time.
I, I guess, was it asked, did anyone ask Tammy if it could have been put on, I'll ask that question.
I, I didn't think about this until Saturday.
Uh, it's fine.
My original.
We will get it taken care of, we will make sure that it operates.
My original question to anybody that was there was Hanson discussed. At the exit interview.
Blake Stevens.
No, Dustin Hanson.
Dustin was the employee that left.
I'm sorry, Blake. Stevens, was he discussed?
Yes, he was mentioned in the last interview.
Your argument, or? Your argument, or your...
Positive. I don't think we can discuss that in session. We... That's, that's the point of wanting, I...
Had the entire board been there. Well, then your motion should have been that to appoint him as manager if you have a, if there's a problem, if not to, not to, to, uh...
Table?
Table. So you shouldn't, you should have made a motion to not appoint him as manager.
I, I actually think the motion was out of order because it currently on our, I bet it has to appoint Blake Stevens as manager.
My motion or Jack's motion?
Both.
My motion was in order. I will challenge that.
Well, motion should have been, it should have been a decision to approve or disapprove. And we didn't, we didn't do either. Blake is there now. I mean, as what... The difference between him being there now and having the title of manager, he's still one employee that are doing the same job. So is there, is this going to cause conflict at the transfer station or tabling it for a week?
Well, I was hoping to interview people who work at the transfer station. If Blake is not going to be appointed manager, it would be a whole different job description, a whole different...
Aren't we, aren't we working to hire an employee there anyway? Another employee at the transfer station?
We, we have a different manager now. I will discuss that. Well, I was planning to discuss that with Blake, yes.
But I mean, could we move forward with the hiring of an employee still?
Well, if the new manager would think that he and another person could run the operation, that would put us into a little bit of a dilemma as well.
What I, what I'm hearing you say is if, if a manager is appointed and thinks the job can be done with two people as opposed to three, then we wouldn't have the need to hire the third person as that.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
So it's going to delay that for more time, which means the secondary road department will continue to cover. An engineer's office will continue to cover. I mean, do you want this on the agenda next week? Or do you want to discuss this and then make a decision about appointing a manager following me? I, I don't, I don't understand.
It could be on the same agenda, just an item down.
I would think that the decision could be made today. So that, that's, uh, by opinion, I will not change, and I will not be putting an agenda on because I've done my diligence.
We put it on the agenda for next week to have a, well, for one, to have a close session regarding the exit interview with the employee.
What is the close session? What is, what's the, I guess, may I ask?
In regards to the employee. Session when you're talking about employee, I believe they have to request that they have to be present.
It, it would have to be on the agenda as a possibility of a close session. They would have to request it in writing.
If that, if that employee doesn't show up, then...
If Dustin doesn't request it, we can't have a close session.
That's, it's not Dustin.
Yeah, Dustin Hanson.
Blake.
What's Blake?
Why would Blake request a close session?
So my question is if he doesn't...
Dustin is not your employee.
You're, you're talking about him. Isn't that what the exit interview, your...
Yeah, I guess what would be, what would be the agenda, I mean, I ask?
I don't know. I'm confused.
Now I'm a little bit too. You can't have a close session talking about employees if, if they don't come in here and request them. So then my question is, so then what are you going to do? You're going to, you're going to sit on your, sit on your thumbs and you're not going to appoint a manager again? I mean, come on, people, this is, this, this is ludicrous. This is how ineffective we, the people consider us as a board because we can't make a simple decision like this.
I think actually there's two employees that would, um, I'm... That, that could be discussed. I would rather talk to Tammy after the agenda and coordinate with Todd as far as agenda language to make sure it's legal, but that's what I had said earlier.
My question again is if Doug's, Doug's employee, what does he employ when he invited to the exit interview?
He scheduled it.
I was on vacation. I was on, I had a vacation plan where I received in two weeks.
But you weren't given any information about the exit interview.
I got...
As the manager of the department. You still don't have any knowledge of the exit interview?
I do not.
The engineer's office wasn't involved in it. But why, he's the department head, why is...
Well, that's because my, the office manager who was representing the secondary road department, she was, she was not in the office yesterday. She was back today. I haven't had an opportunity to consult with her yet. So I will be asking some questions.
I, I think this conversation is very close to the fine line of things that should be discussed in close session.
We're not a subject individual. We're talking about the exit interview. No, he, he's talking for next week. This, the stuff that we would be discussing in the next week, agenda item would be along the lines of close session. Not what we're discussing today.
Well, we're not yet.
Can, can we...
So Mr. Stacker there?
We communicate Doug in the coming week as far as, and as he, as he hears from the office and what, what they found in the interview, and can we communicate with him this week? And then in the next couple of days, put an agenda item on if necessary. And, and it will be necessary to put appointment of a manager to the transfer station on the agenda for next week. So please, you know, leave that on there, but whether any other, whether any other agenda item is necessary or, um, maybe let's, let's just communicate with...
I would certainly hope that any board member that would have any kind of, uh, any information brought to them about any department head, any elected official, I would assume that any board member would try to find out the whole story. A detective that would rely on one person's...
That's why we'd like...
One, no, if you'd allow me, one person's testimony. And then make charges against that person, I would say is not a very good detective. Again, the board has responsibilities, no matter what you're looking at. When we built a new transfer station, the board supervisors at that time made a big decision to close the landfill. And at that time, there was a lot of people that thought they were making a wrong decision. But they studied the issue. They studied it wholeheartedly, six months worth of study, getting both sides of the story. Again, relying on one person's testimony and then not even being able to appoint a manager because of testimony. And I, I, I hope that, again, I put this on the agenda, I don't know, was it Wednesday morning, Tammy? Thursday morning? It was prior to any kind of exit interview. And when the, when the agenda had come out, I think it was pretty clear what was discussed in that agenda item. And not to, I guess, have concerns or make a phone call. That, I, I don't know. That seems strange. But again, I would recommend that Blake Stevens be appointed as manager of the transfer station.
And that is on the agenda for next week. Tammy?
Yeah, I'll make sure that that is what made it.
Okay. So moved, and next agenda item? Carter, your name's on it, changes to the engineer's contract?
I would make the motion to amend the Sioux County Engineers' Contract in Section 10, Letter A, third line, by replacing the word unanimous with the word majority. You made that as a motion? I did. I'll second his motion.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
I don't think this is the time to be talking about this. It's, uh, it should be done at the appropriate time and in the middle of the start budget here. I, I don't, uh, I think this should be taken up at this time. Section 11 says that this contract may be amended, revised, renewed, or extended at any time, only by written approval of the board and the engineer.
And engineer.
Correct.
Did he, did he, did he approve it?
Well, the board hasn't approved anything important to respond, so...
I thought you, I thought that you said it was revising the contract upon board approval and engineer's approval, and he had, Doug has agreed to anything.
So we have to make the approval before it goes for him?
Okay.
We have to speak for you on both sides.
Go ahead.
So the contract ends two years and eight months from now?
As it stands.
This is a proposition to amend it.
This is just a change of language.
Yeah, this is a proposition to amend it now rather than at the potential new contract though, right?
Correct.
And that was, that was all in the email you sent, what, two weeks ago?
Couple weeks ago. I believe you all should have seen that.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Okay, if I repeat the motion first?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion by Nat, second by Whacker, to revive the engineer's contract in Section 10A by replacing the word unanimous to the word majority. Do you want an effective time for that?
Well, it...
Are, are you saying revise or amend? I don't know if there's any material difference there.
There is.
Do you have a preference?
Kind of falls on the both sides.
Yeah.
Amendment is fine.
Okay.
Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Did, did we get an effective date or not, or...
Well, you, you can't do it until the contract that he now has is up. So this contract wouldn't take hold until the old one expired.
No, it just has to be approved by the engineer, has to be accepted.
Correct. It could be revised and changed at any time. It just has to be from written approval from both parties.
Okay. And Stan's...
This is our written, written...
Yeah.
Approval of board, it's all this is.
So there, you can't put an effective date on it until we know if Doug accepts it or not. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, we, yeah.
So do you want a timeline to have a response back by?
No.
No. Actually, what you're doing is presenting Doug a contract to amend, amended contract for him to accept. That's, should be your motion.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, Roger.
That, that really should be your motion.
For, for acceptance of the Cassute County engineer.
Where, where he's presenting.
But if there's, if there's no yes or no in a certain timeframe, we should have some sort of...
Well, then it's rejected.
I mean, it's rejected until approved, really. Yes, I mean, yeah.
Until he says something yes or no, it's rejected.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm not going to vote on this issue.
Nat?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
You can record it at 31 vote. Doug's not voting on this issue because of the dangers.
Does that abstain?
Would be...
Do you abstain? We are up to construction in the right of way.
Uh, Bert, I talk on communications. They requested that, uh... They requested work in the road right where to install fiber cable to a new confinement operation. This would be on 280th Street in between Sessions 34 of Bert and Section 3 Union. I recommend that the board would approve the risks.
I would move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Carter, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous. You, we are up to discussion with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, the Woodland Hills, we're last... Two weeks ago when we, we met, we did do some excavation. We did not find any broken drainage structures. Why that was settling, we don't know, but we filled everything back in, compacted it all really well, and we will be putting a patch over that soon. Resurfacing projects, the contractor has moved into Cassute County. Uh, plant is operating today. They are doing some of their patching that is required and resurfacing will begin tomorrow. The federal funded branch south of Titanka, uh, they have the piling for the south substructures, excuse me, the piers, pier and abutment are in, and they are planning on pouring some concrete, uh, either tomorrow or Thursday. Uh, patching on the Gervington Bridge was about a week ago. It did not go very well. They need to get more mix in there. We've already contacted Blacktop Service, and they are planning the end of this week to complete that.
On, on that, Doug, is that something that'll be tearing stuff out or milling stuff down, going over it for just going over the top?
They will need to mill, and then they'll be putting more asphalt in.
Okay.
And they should have put more asphalt in to begin with. We will have expense for the asphalt. But the milling will not be charged.
Okay, was just curious.
Uh, stockpiling sections is happening up by the, um, Seneca Gun Club. Uh, the contractor, we are supposed to have pre-construction conferences the end of this week. I think it's Friday, Monday, Thursday. But they will be starting that work next week. Yeah, I'll go to airport. Expansion is supposed to begin at any time. I am waiting some, pressing emails to have a little bit more, uh, report on that, more specifics. I'm working on the secondary road annual report. Uh, I think I spoke about these two trucks two weeks ago, but we have a blade that is down, uh, diesel fueling the oil. Uh, we believe it's injectors, it might be a head gasket. They're going to start working on that. And we've got a man, Cannon Shop Service pick up is down. And right now, we have four posi, or four positions that I'm, uh, looking to get replacements on. Uh, and then also consultant changer, Waste Management Association. I hope to bring that to the board for approval, so we can get those, get a new consultant working on that next week. I hope to bring that to the board for approval so we can get those, get a new consultant working on that next week. And then we have, uh, end of self-insurance, end of year reports. I have, uh. Got claim in for next week, but we should be pretty much finished up with the end of fiscal year reports for self-insurance.
Anything else for Doug?
Um, over by, uh, that one ninetieth, whatever happened with, uh. With, uh, Brian Borman?
Well, Brian Borman cut down a bunch of trees along a waterway, um. He had visited a little bit with our road foreman. Um, my understanding was that he was gonna hire a contractor to come in and do some shaping on that ditch. And when the contractor moves in there, we were gonna ask if we brought some riprap for the road right away. If he would place it for us. But that contractor, to my knowledge, has not moved in.
Yeah.
But, uh, there was some trees in the road right away that were taken out and we will certainly protect the road right away.
Yeah. Uh, for our discussion regarding weeds. Said the giant ragweed was not listed as a noxious weed.
I don't believe it either.
What, what do we spray for, just so I know as far as what?
There is a list of noxious weeds in the coal, or, stay, I'll email that to you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I did drive up, uh. I was reached out to me again by Tony Singh. I did drive up there again this morning on my way to the meeting. And there is some giant ragweed just to the west of his house. There's a whole bunch along the field, you know, on the. On the south side of the ditch there, um.
On the back slope.
The back slope.
Yeah, those are when, when agriculture producers or when whoever spray their fields and they decide to spray. Couple extra feet into the road ditch and.
Kills the grass.
And it kills the grass. That's what happens and it's hard to chase that one.
Yeah. Oh, but that's what I, I previously mentioned, is along there and then going south on the next gravel.
I mean, being W aware of that, requested that they.
Oh, very good.
Anything else for Doug?
I guess in, in regards to the, uh, changes and the amendment that was made by the board. Do you have? Any thoughts on that? Are you willing to accept it or do you have an idea of when you'll get back to us?
I have, you are talking specifically about what? Changes in amendment.
The changes that we just voted on.
I've been advised not to come.
If nothing else, we are up to discussion with our county auditor.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Um, next week. The, uh, regular claims week, um, veterans affairs. Approve our annual urban renewal report. Do every year for our tech project.
Orange.
Um, plenty of review of the first part of Sioux County handbook. Um, Donnie and I, we're gonna decide how much of that is sent to you, but, um. We'll get that off to you here shortly, so you have plenty of time to look at it before Tuesday's meeting. Um, instruction on the road right away and then, um, both Mr. Uh, Mickey and Mr. Goshi. Had asked to be on the agenda to talk about drainage assessments. Um, Mr. Goshi did fill out an agenda request and is asking to be on to talk about the assessment and conditions of the various outlets of DD. Or that two, that four, that eleven.
Which, which Joe will.
Yes.
Um, what were the laterals that were listed there?
Um.
But you.
Four, eleven.
Um, I think a discussion on lateral two and lateral four would be premature. Since we have public hearings scheduled for them. I, I don't think we should have a one-on-one conversation. On that when we have hearings that are actively scheduled.
I usually don't turn down an agenda request through you.
Well, it can come in, but you can advise him that the discussion will probably not be done until we have a public hearing date set and.
I mean, I just, just my two cents.
I don't disagree with you, but.
I don't know why we would hash it out with one member of the district for X amount of time and then go back and repeat and have a public hearing in a few more days.
I didn't disagree with you, but I, I think we're gonna have to do that after meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can do that at the agenda time.
He also said he wants to discuss the results of Mr. Spector's special session from the current office first. And they will be putting together a program. Um, so that's it for what's happening next week. You guys have much going on? There's a. I don't think that I have anything else.
Committee reports, Jack? Vacation was good?
Good.
Carter, vacation was good?
That was, that was fine too.
Josh, how was your vacation?
The fair was good. Um, I got tomorrow, we are doing our round one for the. Hazard mitigation plan with the commission, um. So that'll be pretty interesting, uh, going through. The plan with fine tooth comb and finding areas for improvement and things like that, so.
I don't think I have any board reports. My, my vacation or lack thereof was exciting.
I didn't have anything last week, except I gotta talk to Carter after the meeting a little bit about drainage issues.
Okay.
And, um, we have to go back to. The chassis.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I had, I had gotten a text from Elizabeth that she was in a meeting and she can't call me. Uh, but that was forty minutes ago. I tried to text her, but she hasn't, again, but she hasn't responded, so. Don't know what we're gonna do there.
So you're going to change. The price to pay a little week. I mean. Uh, well, that, that could be the problem because, um, I, and I don't know if it's the case with this one, but. There, there may be a deadline on accepting the, what, you know. They're offering the price. Yeah, Phil might know that and if we don't make a decision on it and, you know. Pay it. Jeopardize you the chassis. Yeah, are they gonna move on to the next?
Well, are they gonna start doing it too?
Right.
Well, yeah, and that's in the email. The option that we chose was pay for the chassis. That he can purchase upfront and build it right away at Lifeline for completion later this year, so. If, if we don't purchase the chassis, I, I do think it would affect that, um, I don't know. How much other information was in this email off the top of my head?
We get Phil on the phone, just kinda pose that question to him and. Cause if it's okay to wait a week and let's wait a week and get an auditing, yeah, opinion on that.
Hey, it's, uh, Kyle in the boardroom here. How do I put him on speaker to speaker?
Just first speaking here.
Okay. Phil, can you hear us yet?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're pretty much at the end of our agenda here and, uh. We're kinda going back to discuss about the chassis, have not gotten an answer or call back from Elizabeth specifically yet. So Carter had a question if it would affect our, um. If it would affect the timeline or whatever, if we delay voting on it for a week.
No, I mean, I just have the invoice, you know, it just says do upon receipt.
Yeah, there's no deadline though.
No, I mean, we're in line.
Sure.
Sure, they're gonna send me a, uh, another one if I don't pay it, that means it's just a do upon receipt.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this, holding off a week, it won't affect the price or the availability of the chassis that it will still pretty much be ours?
Would, would you be able to call and double check that quick or see if, see if you?
I mean, if we wait, if we wait a week, the next bills aren't paid until.
So, yeah.
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 So I think we're gonna keep, just table it for a week to, to make sure, get an auditing opinion and. Make sure we can, doing all that correctly.
Yes, we did it.
I look, I look back at the notes, are the minutes from the June twentieth meeting. And all that said was approval of purchase. When you have money available to do so. That's how the motion was. Was made back then, but if you wanna wait a week, I'm fine with that. It's not gonna hurt anything. It's just gonna, it'll be a month, it'll be a month before we pay the bill. Which will be closer to the budget amendment time anyway.
Back on June twentieth, I, I couldn't quite catch all you said. That was in a, we approved to pay for this chassis. Uh, it, once the money was available?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And we had an auditing opinion then?
I'm sure we did, but I looked at to see if there was anything that said, you know, about talking to Elizabeth or talking to anybody about it there. It does not state that, so. I mean, if you wanna wait to have confirmation for her, that's, that's what we'll do.
Okay. We can.
So.
Yeah.
We put on the agenda for next week, is that your wishes?
Yeah, that way everybody's on board.
Yeah, that should be fine. All right, thanks, Phil.
So who's gonna contact Elizabeth?
We have, we have, both Kyle and I have messages entered.
Yeah, um.
Sounds good.
Hopefully, we'll both get a response here, yeah, today, hopefully.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't supposed to do anything.
Yep, no worries.
You're good.
Thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Phil.
I have one more discussion item yet. Has anybody heard anything about Brimer County in their lawsuit?
There's no, there's none there. Oh, I, I talked to the auditor over there several weeks back and no information.
None.
It was like Shelby, absolutely no information until one day, everything was up.
Just curious.
Yeah. Well, North Dakota is the only big news there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is interesting that they got denied there.
Mm-hmm. Being that's where it's all going.
Well, it's gonna stop at the South.
Yeah, it's heading, it's, it's starting in North Dakota, but heading to South Dakota. I'm saying that's where it's all being stored, is in North Dakota.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they'll just have a bottleneck there at the border.
Right.
Anything else to come before the good of Sioux County? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sounds like.
Motion and a second, you choose.
Doesn't matter, man.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.